My name is Denise Blumquist. I'm from Foster Communications. I'm the moderator of this event today. I want to welcome all of you here and on behalf of all the media, Standard Times, Go San Angelo, ConnectXion, and Foster Communications, as well as the assistance from the City of San Angelo, welcome. We will have, the first hour will relate to our city council members. The way that this will work is initially each candidate will be given 60 seconds to give an opening statement. Then questions will be given initially from our two individuals here and they will ask a question. We will begin with one candidate and move from right to left through everyone else. Each person gets 60 seconds in which to respond. Then we will take a five-minute break. We will come back and do the mayoral system candidates the very same way. I want to welcome everyone again and we will begin. Rajsta, do you want to? Well, I guess we should ask our candidates first to each give a one-minute introduction.
My name is Steve Hampton and like the hotel motel chain, Hampton in a minute goes like this: native Texan, military veteran, private businessman, not corporate, independent thinker, capable of abstract and inventive thought, active in church, friendly, outgoing, possessing strong traditional community and family values. I enjoy and wish to maintain San Angelo's big small-town feel and I am moved by a sense of duty. I bring insight born of previous experience, having moved through many chairs, gaining experience over time. I desire to protect the rights, powers, privileges, along with the safety, beauty, and domestic tranquility. My name is Steve Hampton, like the end.
My name is Rebecca Kaufman and I am a candidate for single member District Six. I am 18 years old and a senior at Central High School where I am a member of the choir and the speech and debate team. My vision for San Angelo is one where we can be safe and enjoy beautiful community. And so my priorities are those that come directly from the people and those are public safety, infrastructure, and transparency in the government, as well as fiscal responsibility. I want to make sure that our city council is taking care of the people that we derive our power from and that is my goal as a candidate. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lucy Gonzalez. I am seeking reelection for city council member, single member District Four. I have lived in San Angelo for 29 years. I am married and have a daughter and stepdaughter. I have a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice. I was employed by the Texas Department of Criminal Justice Parole Division and after 26 years of service, I retired. I'm a member of Paul and Baptist Church. I currently serve on the MHMRCV nomination committee and also on the Concha Valley Council of Government's General Assembly as a representative for the City of San Angelo. I have also served on the Revenue and Finance Committee for the Texas Municipal League. I'm here this morning to ask for your vote. Vote Lucy Gonzalez, city council member, single member District Four. Thank you.
I'm Chris Giroux. I'm running for single member District Four here in San Angelo. I've spent the last 25 years as a citizen here in San Angelo. My family was military. My dad was stationed here at Goodfellow and retired here and I chose to stay here, raise my children, start business. You know, it's a typical dream that everybody would have to do better in life. And the more and more I got into operating my business, the more I noticed that the city was impeding me in what I was doing. The permits department just slows you down on trying to get things done. The city's spending is also an issue. Our infrastructure is deteriorating, the water, the roads. Air conditioning systems aren't being properly maintained on current city buildings. The FAA is renting from us out at the airport. The air conditioning system is over 30 years old out there and broke down last summer. If it doesn't get some attention soon, the FAA is probably going to pull out of San Angelo because they're not going to be able to keep their equipment cool. It's things like this that we need to make sure that the city is taking care of these items and-
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
I'm Anna Bartosz and I'm running for city, uh, single member District One. I grew up on a farm near Wall. I'm the fifth of six children. I graduated from Wall High School, Angelo State University, and Texas Tech University. My husband Bill and I have been married 40 years this year and we have lived 37 of those years here in San Angelo. We have two children and four beautiful grandchildren. I am a retired educator from Howard College. I serve on the boards of the San Angelo Tea Party and Concha Valley Republican Women. I volunteer my time with the Concerned Veterans for America. So why am I running for city council? I am a concerned taxpayer. I am concerned about the fiscal responsibility of our city. Texas has the second highest local per capita debt in the country. We're second only to New York. Cities mentioned partially responsible for this would be Abilene, Lubbock, El Paso, and San Angelo. We are getting attention for our debt. Every citizen owes $1,500 with every living, breathing person in San Angelo.
Thank you.
I'm Tommy Heber. I am running for city council for single member District One. I believe my previous service on the council from 1990 to 1996 prepares me to immediately go to work for the citizens of San Angelo and especially for the citizens in single member District One. I will focus on public safety, continuing to repair and rebuild our streets, pursue a sustainable, long-term water supply as our community continues to grow. I will strive to use common sense to be reasonable and fair on each issue that comes before the city council. All of us love San Angelo, there's no doubt. We all know that it could be better. I would love to work with the citizens to make it a better place for each one of us and I'm asking for your vote for Tommy Heber for single member District One.
Good morning. Thank you all for coming. My name is Darren Fintris. I too am running for single member District One. I grew up here in San Angelo. My wife and I graduated from San Angelo Central in 1991. I am a licensed civil engineer in the state of Texas that focuses on municipal consultation. So for the last 10 years, 98 percent of what I have done professionally is work with municipalities, municipal utility districts and small cities and help them with their infrastructure and financing and policies and ordinances. I believe that gives me somewhat of an insight to what I think and what I believe some of my constituents believe and how the cities in Angeles should operate going forward. As a licensed civil engineer, I've taken an oath to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public and it'd be no different as a city council member. May 6th, I hope you'll consider me and vote for me for single member District One. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Billy Dewitt and I am a candidate for city council, single member District Six. I too thank all of you for being here today. I am a lifelong resident of San Angelo with the exception of 10 years when a job transfer took me first to Cincinnati, Ohio for three years and then Albuquerque, New Mexico for seven years before I got to come back to my first love, San Angelo. I graduated from San Angelo Central High School and Angelo State University. I retired from Ethicon after 34 years of service and I'm married to Delance who is the absolute love of my life, my best friend, my strongest supporter. I entered this race because I love the city of San Angelo. I think we have a lifestyle in San Angelo that's comparable to no other city our size. I want to serve this community. I feel that I have gifts and talents that can be used to enhance the city decisions as we go along and be a part of that city leadership. So I'm Billy Dewitt and I'm asking for your vote, single member District Six, in the May 6th election. Thank you.
Excuse me. Bill Richardson for the single member District One. I'm against increases in the use of fees. Use of fees are double taxation. Tax dollars pay to provide services and then the city government charges taxpayers to use those services, double taxation. We need to help balance the city budget by canceling the tiered districts downtown. It's time for those businesses to stand up on their own and the money to be put back into, uh, into the general fund. We cannot afford to pay our own way and we can no longer afford to subsidize those businesses downtown and it only helps a small, small area downtown anyway. And we need at least a 10% cut across the board for all departments except but police and fire, the essential services. And the only way to cut back expenses is for the city council to stand up and require any departments to cut back their expenses. We need a revision of the boards, especially the planning commission. Thank you. Bill Richardson for the single member District One.
All right, that completes our introductions and we will now begin one question at a time. Rajsta, would you like to take the first question?
Sure. Thank you. This is, uh, let's start with that side of the room and then go down. And the question is, despite the most serious challenge the city faces over the next four years, and what are you prepared to do about it?
Okay, I'm Steve Hampton, running for District Six. I feel that the most, uh, the biggest problem that we have now is overspending and that we're reaching the upper limits of what we can pay for. I think what we need to do is go through and streamline our bureaucracy and see what is needed and what is not and maybe even condense some of the departments. That's all I have for right now.
I think that fixing is our budget. Yes, we have other challenges, but we can't fix those if we don't have money. And so first and foremost, we need to take a look at the budget, make sure that we're budgeting for essentials first and then non-essentials. And we also need to make sure that our city departments are being run as efficiently as humanly possible. We need to make sure that we are eliminating waste from the budget and that we can cut back on spending where we can. So ultimately, if we get our budget in line, then that should be able to help us fix other problems down the line.
I believe that the biggest challenge that we are facing and will continue to face is our water supply. That is something that is always going to be something that we are in need of. I believe that we need to have a water resource that will be sustainable for generations to come. We have looked at projects and of course, we always have to look at how much they cost and if they're feasible. We do have the Hickory Aquifer that costs a lot of money. We're using that, but we still need more water. I believe that the average usage of water in San Angelo is 13 million gallons a day. So yes, we have water right now and believe we have it for the next three years, but I think it's something that we need to always be prepared to have. I hope that we will find the project that will help us get there.
I believe that the largest problem that needs to be overcome here in the next four years and addressed is going to be our city's infrastructure. Current city, or not current, but past city councils have neglected our infrastructure for almost 20 years now and we have streets like Bell Street, MLK, 29th Street that are just falling apart, deteriorating. And the infrastructure that's under those streets is deteriorating. If we don't get on the bandwagon now and start getting these things taken care of and make sure we have a plan in place to keep what we repair maintained, then we're going to be right back in this boat in the next 20 years. So we seriously need to take a look at our streets and our water mains and get that problem addressed at this point.
I believe that our biggest concern will be our budget. We need to be able to reduce, streamline our spending, and make sure that the income is in line with our expenditures. Thomas Sowell once said that the first lesson of economics is scarcity. There's never enough of anything to satisfy all those who want it. So we need to streamline our budget and if we do that, if we get the budget in line, then we take care of the infrastructure, we take care of the water, we take care of everything else. So I think the budget would be the first thing I would work on.
I believe the, the long-term water supply for any community, a sustainable long-term water supply, is one of the most important means. Hickory has been mentioned. There is no doubt that the city is working on other projects. If you focus on your long-term water supply, you can then begin to attract businesses. They will have something with which to work if that is needed in their business. I believe that our focus should be, and our biggest long-term issue would be a sustainable long-term water supply for the city.
I believe our biggest issue we're facing is attracting new businesses to San Angelo. The budget, the water supply, and the infrastructure will all be fixed once our tax base goes up. Many, you know, if you don't know, the bulk of taxes that are paid, whether it be middling or death penalty, which by the way, collect more in fees than the cities in Angelo does, is paid by commercial businesses. And it helps to alleviate that tax burden for the residents of the city. So I believe that over the next four to even 10 years, the city really needs to push hard, attracting new businesses and making it easier and more profitable for them to come to San Angelo.
That's a tough question because I feel that everything that has been mentioned is important and so there's going to have to be some multitasking going on. But I too believe that short-term and long-term solutions to our water situation is what is going to be critical over the next four years. If we don't have an adequate supply of water, it won't do any good for us to try to expand our current businesses or bring other businesses to town. If we don't have a sustainable water supply, it won't matter whether our budget balances or whether we are in debt. So I believe that the biggest challenge San Angelo is going to face over the next four years will be short-term, long-term water source.
I'm Bill Richardson, single member District One. We have a 10-year plan in place for our roads, which will also address some of the infrastructure problems with water supply. And we have a five-year plan in place for our water supply, plus we're securing our water by purchasing the Ford brands. The biggest problem facing San Angelo is the cost of services, taxes, and other fees to the public. And the way to reduce that cost is reduce spending. And as I said, all the departments except for the police and fire need at least a 10% mandatory cutback in expenses and that has to be, that's a challenge for the city council, which they have to stand up and have the courage to face. Thank you.
Thank you all. Our second question, we're going to begin with Rebecca and move down the line. If elected, what can you do with your position in city government to make the community more business-friendly?
I think that first and foremost, we need to take a look at the fees that it is costing our business owners to operate within San Angelo. If we are charging them exorbitant amounts of money and blocking their progress through all the red tape, then business development is not going to occur. So we need to take a look at those fees and make sure that what we're charging business owners is 100% necessary. And so if we're balancing our budget, then maybe we won't need as many of those fees as we do now. And so if we get our budget in line, we can take a look at those fees, maybe cut them, and make San Angelo a better place for businesses to operate.
The business-friendly, I would believe that that's what we're, we're trying to accomplish today. We have several resources available, because of DC that has programs for starting a business. I believe that when you work with the city, it helps the business owner be able to, it attracts them. Our quality of life in our city also attracts businesses. And I believe that that is one reason that we have many of us small businesses here in San Angelo that do thrive and do succeed because of the fact that they have, they have the cooperation from the city staff and the community itself.
Where it is that the city needs to be more business-friendly is, starts in the permits department. It's ridiculous to try and get something done with our, with our city permits department over there. Walmart has built many times in this city and every time Walmart builds something, they swear up and down that they're never going to build here again. And if a corporation like Walmart gets frustrated at the way our city permitting and the city staff treat them, I can only imagine what happens to the smaller businesses that are trying to come here. We need to look at the fee structures. We need to look at the time that it takes to get permits done and streamline the information. I know people that go into that permit department and they're told, "We need X, Y, and Z." They bring them X, Y, and Z, then they're like, "We need Q, R, and S now." Well, give me a list of what I need. I want to come here one time, let's get this thing over with. We need to get it, make it more user-friendly so that businesses will want to come to San Angelo.
Anna Bartosz, single member District One candidate. Permits would be probably the biggest thing to invite business here and make it more friendly. I do have, uh, one of the constituents in single member District One indicated that her brother who has built in Saudi Arabia and other places around the world was asked by his sister or brother, I believe, asked by his sister to build a building here so she could start a business. He absolutely refused because of the permitting department here. So obviously permitting is a big hindrance to businesses moving in, so I would start there.
I've had some interesting conversations with folks that have had contact directly and do have regular contact with our permit department. Perhaps one thing we need to do as elected officials is listen. I think having a conversation with folks that have, that actually use those departments, whatever the department may be, but the question here is business-friendly, would be primarily your permits and inspections department, would be to have a conversation with those folks and listen to them to see what their ideas are. Maybe they have some good ideas. Maybe they just need a little help through the process. So listening may go a long way rather than initially using the power of the office to mandate any change, but to find out what the citizens want and possibly how they may think that things can be made better.
As a city council member, I believe that we should be holding staff accountable. You know, most of my other utility districts or municipalities get a report from each staff head or department head, at least one council meeting a month, and we don't do that in San Angelo. I think that needs to change. So as a, as a city council member, I believe if we hold staff accountable for permitting and inspections and other things, I believe that process will get better. And I believe they're working towards it. I work close with the permitting department. I work close with the inspections department, the engineering department, and I believe they are working towards being more amiable to development, but I think we've still got a ways to go.
I would agree that with what has been said up to this point, that our permitting and inspection process is probably the thing that may be the least business-friendly on attracting new businesses to San Angelo. I think San Angelo is a great city and there are businesses that are wanting to come here. There are businesses that are wanting to expand here. So I believe what city leadership has to do in that respect is take a look and listen, as Tommy said, to what people are saying. What are those issues? And as they're passed on to the appropriate departments, then I think there's an opportunity to address that. But I do think businesses are wanting to come to San Angelo because San Angelo continues to grow and to thrive. We have five Walmarts. You know, I don't know another city our size that has that plus a Sam. So, you know, I think we can do better in the permitting and inspection area.
I'm Bill Richardson, single member District One. Small businesses need to take advantage of what the San Angelo Economic Development Corporation offers and talk to them and also talk to the small business that are, people, you know, at the ASU. Okay, one, one of the biggest problems with permits and other regulations that the city has imposed on the builders, okay, on the residential areas, businesses come from Austin and they're mandated by Austin. So citizens should talk to the representatives from Austin to get some of these issues relaxed. And I think that the city staff, the vast majority of them have been bending over backwards and doing everything that they can to try and help businesses come to San Angelo and develop. But a lot of the regulations that they have to impose come from Austin, not exactly from city to city. Thank you.
Yes, Steve Hampton. I, I feel that there, there needs to be a kind of a cultural change in the way we, we think about business. We have, we need to promote an entrepreneurial spirit and that can be done with the assistance of such things as ASU, Howard College, and even in, starting in the high school, how to start a business. We need to be friendly to business. It's been brought up that fees and codes tend to choke the business growth here and we need to fight against it. And we, we're, we tend to turn our COSA DC towards making a home run hit with a large corporation instead of trying to foster mom and pops in the area. We need to, and, and small business is the largest, largest employer in the world, so thank you.
The next question, I will start with Lucy and this number is sort of changing direction. What can city government do to improve the quality of life for the residents of San Angelo, the citizens?
Well, I like that question because of the fact that I get to brag on everything that we already have, having the, the Riverwalk that was named the place in Texas. Also, we have our auditorium that's going to be completed in the fall. We have the, a Royal, Red, uh, Red Arroyo Trail that the trailers will start walking and all along from the beginning to the end, you see art along the way. There's a lot of things here in San Angelo that make the quality of life so much greater and we're just getting better at this because we continue to have projects. There's a project that they're looking at in Chadford, downtown Chadford, where the streets will be fixed in a way that it will also have the lighting, kind of like the streets have in downtown Fort Worth or the older cities.
I think that we have a lot of things here in San Angelo that give us a great quality of life. It's why I decided to stay here when my dad retired. It's a wonderful little city, but I think that city government needs-
It's a wonderful little city, but I think that city government needs to get out of the way in order to make this a great quality city. By attracting more businesses, different venues, we've had an explosion in arts. We've had an explosion in downtown. We've got some wonderful performing arts centers. We have a lot of stuff that's coming through our art museum here. We have a fort right here in the center of town. There's lots of wonderful things to do. It attracts lots of people from surrounding areas around Texas to come and visit San Angelo. I think we just need the city to get out of the way and allow development by private citizens and private companies to bring bigger and greater things to San Angelo.
I believe San Angelo is very fortunate to be at the confluence of the Conchos. So we have some beautiful areas. We have rivers that run through, and we've got art in uncommon places. We've got wonderful things. We've got the murals that are on different buildings in downtown San Angelo. So San Angelo has gone a long way in art, and we do have a lot to offer anybody who comes here if they want to enjoy the art. Perhaps something else we could do is make a green space along the Red Arroyo where it floods when it rains, when we get the rains that we hope and pray for. We see a lot of flooding along the Arroyo, so maybe we could make that a green space and put maybe holding ponds along the way so that it wouldn't flood, and then it could be a nice big park area for people to come.
Quality of life is one of those things that is, I'm going to say, different for each individual. Many things have been mentioned here. One thing that has not yet been mentioned, that obviously is in the fabric of San Angelo's DNA, is our stock show in rodeo. There has been, there have been many improvements made out at the facility out there, at the Coliseum and the fairgrounds and the stockyards out there. But that is one thing that we can probably focus on. Another big part of our DNA in San Angelo and West Texas are our sports. We have Texas Bank Sports Complex, that perhaps we could look at expanding that in some way for additional opportunities for sporting events to happen here. We've got our art museum. So there is no doubt, many things here, the city needs to help foster that and continue that growth in those areas.
I tell you, this is a tough question for me. I'm a civil engineer, so quality of life to me means water, sewer, streets, safety. So, you know, the people that have spoken for me, they talk about yards, they talk about parks and the walking trails, and I love to fix, so as long as I have a lake nearby, I'm good. So, but to answer the question, as a city council member, I believe it would be very important for me to listen to the citizens so they tell me what quality of life they want. What do they want to make their life better? You know, there's been lots of things, means in the parks, you know, the river, the rodeo, sports. I would look to the constituents to tell me what they want, what makes their life better. And then as a city council member, I can, I would be able to work with the other city council members to improve ordinances or make funding available for the things that the citizens want. Thank you.
Well, I think San Angelo leadership must be doing something right. You drive by the population sign, and I think it says 93,000, and now we're over 100,000. So something must be going right for people to continue to want to move to San Angelo. Now, when we talk about the citizens of San Angelo and what could make their life better, I think improved roads, improved infrastructure, I think having that sustainable water supply, and all of the other things that have been mentioned, because San Angelo is a great place to be, in my opinion, and I think probably everybody under the sound of my voice feels that same way. So I would certainly, you know, want to know what the citizens need to improve their life and would try to be responsive to that. Thank you.
Bill Richardson, Single Member District One. The biggest thing that the city can do to improve the quality of life in San Angelo is to leave more money in taxpayers' pockets and to cut down on user fees, cut down on Also, as a member of the city council, I propose two things in Southeast San Angelo. One was that when they close the fire station down, that the parking lot there, where the fire train station is, that that be turned into a parking lot for Glenmore Park, because that's a well-used park, and it needs parking. Okay, another proposal that I had for Southeast San Angelo is to build a trail walkway between South Chadford and Big Rock Road and over to Glenmore Park, and that will connect it with the trails along South Chadford and all the way to the trails on North Chadford. And I say again, cut the cost of living, leave more money in the taxpayers' pockets.
Yes, Steve Hampton, Single Member District Six. I agree with Bill on that. We need to keep those taxes down. But we enjoy, and as a people, we enjoy the Can Do Texas heritage that we've grown up in. We have conservative values, we're open-minded and interested people, religious people, kind. We have a lot of things going for us, and I think it has a lot of things that have to do with where you enjoy a place, is how you can get ahead and how the people are to you. If they're friendly, they're Texas-friendly, then we're going to be happy where we're at. So I agree with Chris that the government needs to get away, get out of the way, and so we can enjoy the history, the water and the trees of this area. Thank you.
I think that first and foremost, we need to make sure we're taking care of the essentials, such as our water, our roads, and our public safety. Because ultimately, we can't have these fun projects if we're not taking care of the basics. And if we take care of the basics, we're going to attract more business here, and that's going to increase our tax base, and then we'll have more money that we can spend on giving the people what they want in the way of these fun projects. And so I think to improve quality of life, we need to focus on the essentials first and then listen to the people to figure out what they want the government to give them.
Thank you all. The next question, we're going to start with Chris. What is your preferred solution to San Angelo's long-term water supply problem? And do you support direct potable reuse?
I do not support direct potable reuse. There are no applications of that in the United States. There's a small pilot plant here in Texas looking at the feasibility of that. At this point, direct potable reuse is way too expensive to, for us as a community, as small as we are, with our tax base, to be putting money forth to basically test a system to see if it's going to work. Direct potable reuse may be good in 15 or 20 years, but let's let the places like Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio, the bigger cities that have a bigger tax base and can afford multimillion-dollar production facilities, take that on, perfect the product, and then look at rolling it out possibly. But I say at least 15 to 20 years before we even consider something like direct potable reuse.
I do not support the toilet-to-tap or the direct potable reuse water. I think we could do, we have more options than that. Certainly, it is too expensive, it is experimental, and that's not something when you're on a smaller budget need to be putting your money toward. We could even, perhaps, since we are on top of basically a salinity-type ocean water supply, perhaps we could put in a desalination plant. Those are established, and the science is there for those. So I would go with that, something a little bit closer that we could do more economically.
I honestly do not have enough information to give you whether I am in full support or I am totally against direct potable reuse. One of the ways that I try to operate is to gather as much information and as many facts as I possibly can before I make a decision. At this point, I do not have enough information or facts to give you a I am in favor of or I am against that. One thing I think we can all support is, in terms of a sustainable, long-term water supply, is to talk to every single entity. Anna just mentioned the desalination. You know, that could be a viable option that we should look more closely at. There's obviously places around the world that do that and do it well because that's the only source of water they have. So that may be something we need to do.
I'm going to need more than a minute to answer this question. No, really.
I'll only get a minute.
I know. This is what I do, and I do support the wastewater reuse project. I tell you, it is not experimental treatment. Big Spring has a, as Anna said, toilet-to-tap plant right now. The town of Wichita Falls used theirs for a little while when they turned off all the residents for an uproar because their water quality went down after they got the house. Desalination is, of course, a possible solution, but I tell you, the plant that treats, the wastewater comes out of the wastewater drill plant will be the same plant that treats desalination, and it'll be less expensive to operate treating wastewater. The water that comes out of your sewer plant is, has less bugs in it, if you will, bad bugs, if you will, than what your surface water plant brings in from the Concho right now. Thank you.
Well, for me, I was hoping that question would not be asked because my answer is, it depends. I have a mindset about toilet-to-tap water, and, you know, if it comes down to it and that's our only option left, I don't think we will have much choice. But I'm hoping that with our water partnership with Abilene and Midland, that we can continue to search for additional sources of water, like Hickory or something else other than toilet-to-tap. So I'm just hoping that we don't have to go there, that if we had to, then, and I was on council and had to make that decision, if it was that or nothing, then certainly we'd have to go that way.
Bill Richardson, Single Member District One. With our partners, Abilene and Midland, we have found other sources of water, but it's a, the prevailing factor is the cost of plating it here. Okay, we are securing our water rights by purchasing the Ford brands, and that's a long-term solution. As far as the Potable Water Project, I voted against it for reasons that petrochemicals cannot absolutely be removed, or pharmaceutical chemicals, sorry. Okay, also, the cost is too much for us to afford, and there's no safe way to get rid of the wastewater. They're going to put it in, they're going to drill wells and put it in wells, but there's no guarantee of how long those wells will last.
Yes, Steve Hampton. I have no preferred way. I've looked at all of my things. Groundwater from Valverde County is probably going to ring in on the least expensive method of doing that, but pipeline, pipeline costs are going up dramatically. Wastewater recycle, I'm not opposed to that. It comes with a high price also, the cost of production. Desalinization, maybe with windmill power, seems reasonable to me, but you heard from an engineer that it may not work out like we think it might. I myself think we have water for a while. It depends, we're a religious people, and the water cycles here, we go from drought to flood, so I think we're good.
I think that we need to continue exploring all of our options to secure a long-term water supply. I think that the toilet-to-tap project could work as a last resort, but I think we need to explore all of our options before we are faced with that decision. I simply haven't seen enough data to back up the fact that it is a safe and feasible option, and also we need to take into account the cost. And as a city government, we need to make sure we're taking care of the people, and so how can, we need to make sure we have all of the information before we make that decision so that we're not putting our constituents at risk.
On the direct potable use, we had looked at that, and we, due to the cost, we had put it on hold. So this is something that we may need to revisit in the future. Like Darren said, there's two plants that are, that have this in Texas, and that's Wichita Falls and Big Springs. I've visited the plant at Big Springs, and it's huge, and it's very complicated, and the way they tell you how the chemicals are used and how it's obtained is something incredible. But not only do we need to get informed as the council of how this works and what it takes, I believe that we also need to inform and educate our citizens so they will be in on the process and know what this project involves before making the decision of actually wanting to use the direct potable for use. Thank you.
In order to allow our candidates to make a final statement, that had to be the last question. And so we'll start with Anna Bartosz, and each of you can make a closing statement.
Consider me Anna Bartosz, Single Member District One. When we vote, early voting begins Monday, April 24th. So I would appreciate your vote. My big thing is the budget, but I'm also concerned about the crime, the streets, and other, the high taxes and the water rates as well. So thank you so much for being here, and I appreciate the time that we've been given. Thank you.
I want to thank Kynexion. I want to thank Standard Times Go San Angelo, Foster Communications, the City of San Angelo Public Information folks who are putting this on today. I believe having served on the council from 1990 to 96 gives me the tools that I need and has prepared me to go to work immediately for the folks in Single Member District One and here in Tallahassee. I would strive to unite our community. You know, there's two words within community, there is the word community, and then there is unity in community. I would strive to unite this community and work well with the council. People have heard me say this a whole lot. I will strive to use common sense, to be reasonable, to be fair on each issue. So I ask for your vote for Tommy Heber for Single Member District One. Thank you.
I too would like to thank the media and the city of San Angelo for hosting this forum. You know, I believe a lot of us have a lot of the same opinions on the issues and things the city has kind of, I don't know that I stand up on the issues, but I am a licensed engineer, and I believe that does set me apart. For the last 10 years, I have worked with municipalities on the issues that face San Angelo. I've seen how they have done, what they have done, I've seen the things that have worked and what hasn't worked, so I believe I bring some of that experience to San Angelo. Again, the elections are May 6th, or the voting starts on April 24th, and I appreciate your vote for SND One. Thank you.
The message of my campaign is embrace the vision, and the vision that I intend to embrace is about people, it's about purpose, and it's about progress. I believe that I can use my talents and gifts and my over 30 years of business experience to make positive, progressive contributions on the city council. So Billy DeWitt... So Billy DeWitt, single member District Six, and I would appreciate your vote in the May 6th election. Thank you. God bless.
Bill Richardson, single member District One. I thank the media and I thank everybody for participating in this election. One of the things that was not discussed was the flooding in the city. People, people are having their homes damaged in the Butler Heights region and they are facing a safety issue there. It's not a capital improvement project, it's a safety issue. Because the ambulance is, the fire, the police cannot get in there if the road is flooded. And I've been out there in that district in the past week in that area, and it is a safety issue. And in other areas of the city, it's not just a civil, a civil issue. People's homes are being damaged. Okay? And I, you know, I looked, I looked after all the people in all the districts from, from Ellet to Lake, Midwood, Southeast San Angelo. And also, I need to protect the Lake Neuzer Fund. Thank you.
Yes, Steve Hampton running for District Six on the city council. The end is here and my name continues to be Steve Hampton. Active and engaged in the, as a citizen and continue to desire to continue to be as a city council member. I think we have to look at emergency preparation and balance between the city council and, and city administration. There are, many of the symptoms that we've talked about today are because there's a disequilibrium. I believe that the not-ready-for-prime-time players have already changed the affairs of this community and are not, and not for the better. I believe that hard bargaining is a virtue and not mean or cheap. I believe that mom and pops are not being fostered and that small business, the largest employer in the world, is not, is being choked out and discouraged here in San Angelo. Thank you for your attention, Steve Hampton.
Rebecca Kaufman running for single member District Six. I would like to thank the media and the city of San Angelo for hosting this forum today. I want to focus on the people. And so my platform is based on listening to the people and giving them what they want and need. And that also means we need to take care of our infrastructure, our public safety, and making sure that our city government is running as efficiently, efficiently as possible and that we are not overspending and creating a bigger burden for the citizens of San Angelo. And so I ask for your vote on May 6th or during early voting, which starts Monday, April 24th. And so vote for me to give San Angelo a fresh start. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. I'm very proud to announce that earlier this week, I received the endorsement from the San Angelo Police Officers Pack and also from the San Angelo Realtors Association Pack. I want to thank them very much for this endorsement. I also want to thank my constituents from District Four that voted for me two years ago. I'm here to ask for their support and their vote against this election. I want them to know that I will continue to represent them as I have the last two years and work hard like I have. I will continue to be fair and just and overall, not only just for my district, for the whole entire city of San Angelo. So I'm asking for your vote on May 6th. Vote Lucy Gonzalez, single city council member, single member District Four. Thank you and God bless San Angelo.
I'm Chris Giroux, running for single member District Four. I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in today's forum. I appreciate the ability to come here and speak today and get the message out to all of our constituents. I'd like to just sum it up by saying I've got my three S's. There's safety, streets, and spending. Those are the three items that are most important and I think need to be concentrated on. I may not have gotten the endorsement from the San Angelo Police Department, but I strongly back them in everything that they do. I'm going to be a voice for police and fire here in San Angelo. We need to make sure that they're given the resources to properly protect the citizens of San Angelo. We need more officers on the streets. We need better, newer equipment for police and fire. I would like to thank everybody for coming today. Again, I'm Chris Giroux, single member District Four, and I'd appreciate your vote on May 6th.
On behalf of everyone here, I want to thank all of the candidates for being here. To the audience, we will now take a very short break as we turn it over for the mayoral candidates. Kynexion provided a little refreshment back there if you want to do that, and we will be back very shortly.